Yeah, I'm just recording now.
Thanks, Jess.
Kia ora koutou, welcome back to you all for our second Zoom session on Three Waters. We'll do a little bit of recapping from the last session and then move on to some of the areas where we may want to provide feedback about the proposal. If you've got questions, just raise, use the raise hand function and I'll try and organise the questions, but I'll hand over to Pat. And I think there's going to be some slide shared as well on the screen. Kia ora, Pat.
Thanks, Rachel. So workshops in two parts. The first part, we wanted to answer some of the questions that came out of the first workshop. And we have Dan Bonifant from Morrison Lo back at three o'clock to work through that matrix that he put up about issues that might arise. So really, this was a chance after you've had it, one week after the first workshop and a chance to think about it. But answer this, some specific questions you have, and then if there was time with them for the questions you wanted to ask. So the first workshop, we talked through our three water assets and the financials. Dan talked about the Wix dashboard, and if you've got questions about that, then probably best to wait for Dan when he arrives. And look, I'm sorry, he's not available till three o'clock. These key speakers there and they're working with 67 councils up and down the country. So you've got to hook your times and be grateful for the time you get. So Dan will be logging in about three. We talked about the National Case for Change and also talked about the eight week period. Where is really a chance for us to influence and shape the final proposal. I mean, I think Rachel mentioned that this is the first time that the government has ever let local government in New Zealand this far into the tent to be influencing government thinking, which also makes a challenge for us because there's lots of stuff that we don't know the answers to. And we're not the ones holding the pen, but the clear message that's that local governments talking about up and down the country is that our concerns are heard and presented to government in a coherent fashion. So at the end of September, the government gets feedback from all the councils and then cabinet's going to make decisions. We don't know what those decisions are and so we're focused on making sure that from our council's point of view, that we give clear feedback to the government on the things that are important to our community. We've got, we were going to have two public meetings next week. They were supposed to be this week, but of course lockdown stopped that. And we postponed until next week, hoping that level two would let us run those. But the level two restrictions are so tough that we couldn't get more than 35 people into Green Meadows and no more than 50 into the northern end of the Trafalgar Center. And we think that's just not going to work. That will get a lot of people wanting to come in and a lot of frustrated people. So we're going to run them as webinars on the 14th and 16th of September. And we've managed to arrange for Jason Crutt, the Deputy Chief Executive of LGNZ to be speaking, be one of the speakers at those meetings as well. So we're revisiting maybe 30, 35 minutes of presentation and then facilitated Q and A through the chat function on those webinars. Very similar to the process that local government in New Zealand have been operating very successfully as they've communicated with elected representatives throughout the country. So on to the next slide. And I think the first thing we're going to start talking about is our debt to revenue ratio ratios and our financial forecast. And I think Nikki Harrison, you were going to talk through this?
Oh, yes, I was. Thank you, Pat. So, sorry, Jess, if you just go back one screen. So there were some questions from the workshop, the first workshop that I, we wanted to cover off today. There are still a couple of questions that we're working through, which will be brought back as part of the decision making process. When we, you know, it's part of the due diligence when we actually get to the point of making decisions. Because there's quite a lot more work involved with bringing back those pieces of work. So in terms of, there was a question around how our debt to revenue looked broken down by the three waters. And so if we just go to the next screen, the simplest way to sort of show it is, you know, we had a we showed you what a debt to revenue ratio would be excluding the three waters, which is actually the yellow line on this. But I think you people, we understood that the overall three waters debt to revenue ratio was a lot higher. And we wanted to break it out. So you can sort of see interestingly that the stormwater debt to revenue ratio is, is quite, is climbing quite substantially. Water is relatively stable. So that's the grey line through the middle at around, you know, 240%. But you can sort of see that stormwater is the one that's really ramping up over the long term plan in terms of that debt to revenue ratio. So just on the next slide, Jess, we just pull, you know, I just sort of wanted to sort of have a look at the main drivers of the increase in stormwater and wastewater. And you can sort of see from the LTP that we've just recently signed out that there were some quite big projects and both stormwater and wastewater that would explain those increases. The second question I was going to cover off on the next slide was, there was a question around how the, you know, what was this a sort of 30 year a 30 year, how a 30 year investment profile looked that we had. So the cleanest way to do that really just to pull out sorry, infrastructure strategy and have a look at that. So we don't fully, we don't do debt to revenue ratios out to 30 years because it's near on impossible. So as part of the infrastructure strategy, we really do look at, this is the graph that's sort of in the back of the infrastructure strategy. So you can sort of see, I suppose the interesting thing here is really in all of the, so this is water supply. So for example, you can see the renewals component that we've been got going through the long term plan. And then you can sort of see in five year chunks going out in the LTP. So you can sort of say, we do have a higher profile on that renewals front than we have in this, in this first 10 year period as a percentage. But I think what, one of the things there, which is linking back to the three waters analysis is that that's, that's telling us that they don't believe we're spending enough on renewals for a city our size. And so if you just flip through, that's the water supply, one wastewater and stormwater. So that's kind of the, the different components of our capital program going forward.
Can I just, so you recall during the long term plan debate, particularly if you go back to the wastewater, the wastewater one, what you used one? Or actually, the water one's probably better. We talked, Alec and his team talked about the fact that Stoke is coming due for renewal. So all the, all the infrastructure that was put into Stoke in the 1950s, 60s and 70s, as it grows so rapidly, is now due for renewal. And we talked about trying to bring some of that work forward into this 10 year period to try and ease the, the step that's going to be as those renewals come on stream. But it just made a total debt too high. And there was also questions about deliverability. So we left it in the years when it is due for renewal. But you can see that round about the year 2030, 31, there's going to be a significant step in the money invested in our water, wastewater and to a lesser extent, stormwater. And then the reason there's a lesser focus on stormwater, the step is less than stormwater was, there wasn't as much focus on installing stormwater in the, in the early 60s. It wasn't until the, I think the Tahuna Hill slot occurred in the early 60s that the lack of stormwater control was identified as an issue for Nelson City. And we've been playing catch up ever since. Thanks, Nikki.
And so those are the slides I've got. And I think Alec was going to talk through, there was a question around the efficiency of our three water services. Which, Alec, do you have a check to? Thank you.
So, so thank you. So I missed the first workshop, but the way I understand this, the question about our efficiency. And I will just refer to the work that we did under the RFI, the Request for Information that we were working with WIX. And we had to have that in place by December. And you can see that they rated us in the top right hand corner, you'll see that, that grey block called performance, operating performance assessment, the OPAs. And they assessed all the councils that participated in their RFI as to where they sit. So you can see they classified us as performing in line with expectations, number three. But in terms of our efficiency, there was some data that we queried when we got this dashboard. And when we questioned that with WIX, for example, if you look at that figure at the bottom, and I just can't see it fully on my screen, but it says there under services, the 12,341 properties affected by unplanned interruptions. We didn't know where they got that figure from, for example, and I use that as one example. And that 12,341 was actually in the order of about 2,795. So you can see that in that one particular case, the, the properties affected by unplanned interruptions was certainly never as high as 12,000. Was about 2,700 and that's based on all the data we gave them. They did indicate to us that before we even questioned them on some of the factors, we were on the cusp of being in exceeding expectations. So that's the OPA number two, but they certainly confirmed that as a result of the additional information that we did supply them, it would be highly likely that Nelson City Council would certainly be in that second band and namely exceeding expectations. So in terms of our efficiency, in terms of the services that we provide as a Nelson City Council, we would be rating very, very highly. Granted, they accepted that at that stage, they weren't going to, they had a cut off in terms of the information. And to be honest, we didn't push it very much at that stage. We had certainly been a little bit burnt out in terms of the data that we had been supplying. But I thought, you know, that that sort of ties in with the view that Pat has indicated to you previously and that in terms of the services we supply across the board for water, wastewater and stormwater. We are, you know, fighting above our weight limit there. So hopefully that answers that question in a broad outline.
Alec, I've just got a question. So I'm looking at that dashboard and I can see the 12,341. And I think that relates to water restrictions. Is that, is that what you were referring to? Was I misunderstanding that?
I, I just use that as an example, Rachel. There's, there were 75 spreadsheets with thousands of lines of data that we were, that we were providing. As to exactly what that is, I don't know, but it would probably be as a result of water restrictions, for example, yes. But I just use the example, I wouldn't be able to tell you categorically what all items went up to for them to derive that figure other than to say that it wasn't 12,000. And I use that as one example, it was in the order of about 2,700.
All right. So I would look at that. So I, I thought you might have referred to some other factor, not water restrictions. So I would understand that that is probably, that one may well be right because we volunteered. We have volunteered water restrictions to support Tasman in the past. So you know what I mean? My son and we don't have to go on to water restrictions, but we've tried to be helpful neighbours. And so we've, you know, dropped down, we know we've gone early on those ones before, partly because we were concerned that Tasman were going to need to be supplied from us. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. The point I'm trying to make is that, that that's one aspect that they arrived in getting that. But the overall view from, from WIX as well as DIA, that we would certainly be in the exceeds expectations category.
Yeah. You know, no, I do get that. I just, I just mean if one of the factors that they're measuring around performance was an inference that you had, because you had water restrictions, there was a problem with your water, what you were doing. In our case, we made a very deliberate decision.
Oh, absolutely.
As we were doing cross boundary support for another council. That's all.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes. And that's a valid point. Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Hopefully.
Question? Yeah, I'll just see if there's any other questions for Alec or for Nikki. Can't see anybody coming up on my list at the moment. Everyone seems pretty good. I'll take my hand down. Okay, and we'll keep on going. Right, what's next? Okay. So we're back to you, Pat.
I thought you were going to speak to this one, Rachel, about the heads of agreement.
Yeah, no problem. Okay. So I guess probably just coming back for the context, one of the things that we need to be doing now is we need to be going through and looking at all of our data, asking the additional questions we've got to understand what is there. We, because there's a lot of information to get through. At some point, I did want to talk about, have a discussion around the no council worse off package and the all communities better off package and the transition funding and issues around stranded overheads. So I'm not sure if we're going to get to that, but I'll just note that for the moment. And if anyone's going to cover that, that would be helpful. Let's try and do those ones if we could. All right, I'll keep going.
No, no, sorry. So Rachel, I'll talk to the stranded, stranded.
Oh, you'll come, okay, you'll come to that? Okay.
So maybe we talk about it now. One of the things, the phrase stranded overheads is used, but quite often that means people. And that's not something that we're going to talk about in public workshops. That's something that once, once we understand what's being proposed, we'll be talking with our staff. We're already starting those conversations, but it's, it's, yes, we may have some asset management software we don't need anymore. But those things are pretty easy to, to wind up. But it's, it's, it's quite often it's a euphemism for people and staff. And, and part of their job is gone, the other half hasn't. How do we manage through those processes? And that's one of the things where we've, you know, as an SLT, we've made a commitment that one of the things is that we'll be working hard to make sure that no one is made redundant through this process. We've got, if these changes do go ahead, we've got the best part of three years to, to align our organisation with a new way of working. So we have plenty of time and we have, have a, you know, about 13% turnover each year with our staff. So we think we can position ourselves to avoid those, any redundancies. But the first conversations will be internal and with our staff. And then we will probably brief the councils in a public excluded workshop. It's not the sort of thing we would talk about in the public arena.
Okay, thanks, Pat. So if we just go back to the come back to the what we meant to be doing now, pick it. So we go to that next slide, you scrubbing and put that back on all this way through this, not quite. Just here, we go. Okay. So it's part of the proposal that's, that has been negotiated with the government to get to this point. There are two components to it that we've looked at. One is the, the no worse, and I'm starting on the no worse off for councils. So the, it's the, should read those as no council worse off, every community better off. So it's slightly different in terms of how you would look at it. So it's internally focused for the 500 million to ensure that no council is financially worse off through the direct impact of the reform. And that, that is where we, we know that there are some councils around the country where the debt, the debt to revenue improvement won't be there without some additional, some transitional support. So they'll get, they'll get a component of additional support and they may have a higher number of stranded overheads and stranded overhead costs or stranded costs, actually stranded costs. So the government's have made some provision for that. They've made it uncapped. So they know that there's a due diligence process if they decide to proceed to actually work that through for every council. So they'll have to come in and do that process. There's also funding for transition support because this isn't an instant process. If they decide to move through on this, they'll have, you know, it's 2024, you run through and get the whole thing stood up. So there'll be costs around transition that need to be met. So the intention being that the council itself and its financial position, no council is worse off. And for most councils in the modelling, you can see that there is either, you know, as Pat talked about last week, some councils are, you know, the improvements are quite significant for others there. They're not as much, but for everyone there in a better position. And then we've got the better off package for communities, which was a commitment from the government to invest in community wellbeing and the value of local government. And so they've made a provision, proposing a provision of $2 billion of investment funding. Not in some criteria around that, but they're fairly, fairly broad. There's a distribution on that funding that's relative to population, relative deprivation and land area. And so in that calculation, Nelson was nearly 21 million. And there'll be no right answer to that one. That's a bit like the, a little bit like the, the model, the models will show a trend. They'll be giving the same sort of outputs, but everyone's numbers will be not necessarily absolutely, you know, that they'll all, all their direct numbers will be wrong. But in the case that it comes to funding allocations, what I've found is that there's never agreement across local government of what was a fair allocation. So it is, it is what it is. So in terms of, some people might have wanted to say greater proportion allocated to population. Some would have wanted to say greater proportion allocated to land or deprivation. And then the use of that funding is for local wellbeing, things associated with climate change and resilience and housing and local placemaking. So it's really, it's us, towards starting to talk to that future for local government and wellbeing agenda. So any questions on this slide? We've got Gail and then Matt.
Thanks, Rachel. Mine was actually up for Pat's, so Pat's comment. So just wanted to clarify, I asked the question about stranded assets. The stranded assets was actually the terminology used. So can he just confirm that that, he said, he used another word, stranded something else. So are we just, are we talking about the same thing?
I think so. Most of our stranded assets or overheads will be people related. It could be staff, it could be office space, software, software systems is, is would be one thing that we, we might have to, have to carry for a couple of years. So we could get, we could get our way out of. But most of those stranded overheads would be to do, would be people related.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Pat, because I was thinking when they said stranded assets, I was thinking of infrastructure all type of assets. So it's probably not a very good terminology from the receiving end. So thank you for that. Now I'll move over.
Sorry, Gail, we may have what, two or three, you know, too many cars, too many vehicles. We might have to sell those sorts of things. But again, it's all people related.
Yeah. No, that's fine. It's quite different from what I anticipated. So that's good to hear. Now I'll go on to the package your local government, Rachel. There's been a bit of conversation in the community about, about the allocation of that funding, which is, well, there's the allocation of the funding. But there's also the calculation of the funding. So given that they seem to have used the same calculation for this as they do for paying or allocating funding for councillor salaries. I've always thought that it's rather odd because in that case, we're doing the same job as somebody in Auckland and they're getting paid humongous amounts of money. Probably for not much less time, or actually quite often I've heard less time than we spend. So how did we actually, how did they come up with, who agreed with this calculation or the formula, they call it?
There's a negotiation around that in terms of what's fear across local government and what the government was prepared to provide. And I think the difference between looking at it from a salary and aspect is, you know, if you're thinking population will play a role. So if you're investing in community wellbeing, that means you've got a lot more people you need to invest in. So you, it makes sense that there's a population, relative deprivation, again, it's, these are people focused, predominantly people focused attributes. But land is also one where you might, you know, if you've got a large area, you'll have more community halls, you know, potentially you need just more of them. So if you're trying to, you know, invest in wellbeing, it's, it's quite a small allocation, I think, for land. This time they've put on, it's predominantly around population. So as I said, there's no, no right formula.
So how, what basis did they use for our numbers? Because I'm not so sure that, that last census is much help to us, right? Do you want, have they, have they updated the, the figures that the base design?
I, I don't have that level of detail, Gail, but we could find that out. And so this is one thing we can provide feedback on if we don't think that that is a fear, you know, either quantum or fear or fear formula, then we can provide feedback on that. But I just, I think someone's making a note of the question. So.
Yeah, just if we can check that our figures were sort of reflective of what they actually are. And the last question I guess I've got is that regarding the, the spending of. So what's the, what's the thinking about where that fund is going to go? And how it's going to be spent? How, and what's the, what's the method for that?
There is, there is that third bullet point on the left gives a summary of the types of things that the funding can be used for. And then I think there's some engagement, intent for some engagement with, with EWE and given it's and there'll be some process to apply to the government, but nothing as complicated as the provincial growth run process is what we're told. So if we go to do that, we'd want a relatively straightforward, simple process to be able to access that funding. And I think from memory, about 500 million of it across the country is available for release by the middle of next year. Okay, thanks, Gail. Matt?
Thanks, Rachel. So I'm just wondering, is this the government's best offer?
I think, I, it's, I think there's always a challenge for the government of balancing priorities. And it's really a decision for the minister of, you know, recommendation of Minister of Finance to cabinet. Given the, you know, the lockdown impacts of COVID creating more pressure on the government, I think it's unlikely for it to go up as a total quantum. But if you don't think it's reasonable, then we should go back and say that. I'm just conscious there are a lot of pressures on the government's, government's finances at the moment.
Sure. I'm also conscious of a growing backlash against this proposal. So, so I'm just wondering, is this set in stone or is there the ability for some movement? Pat's got his hand up.
It's a proposal. So there's all, you can always go back. But Pat, did you have any thoughts on that?
So there's a lot of focus on the $20.7 million, but I just also wanted to talk through the numbers. So our total three water assets are projected, the 30th of June, 24, to be $716 million. Now, I'm being told, I have to say that's land, which has been revalued at current market value. Buildings and equipment are valued at historical cost less depreciation. And infrastructure was, which is revalued at replacement cost less accumulated depreciation. And also we aren't sure what stormwater assets were transferred. So that's, that's our accounting estimate based on the long term plan of what our assets would be in, on 30th of June, 2024, 716 million. And associated with that is 81 and a half million dollars worth of debt. So we get paid that too. So it's not just 20.7 million dollars. We, we would get 81 and a half million dollars to pay off the debt associated with those assets, which is an important part of the package as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, Matt, any other questions from Matt? No? Okay, Tim?
You just, it's probably fundamental, this better off side of it, you've got 2 billion of funding to invest in future local government. And then Nelson gets 20 million and it's due support. It's calculated on relative deprivation, land area, et cetera. So I don't understand, I mean, I understand the terminology, but I So I don't understand, I mean, I understand the terminology, but I don't understand how that's got to do with three waters, so.
It doesn't have to do with three waters, so it's not a, it's not a payment for the asset. So let's be really clear on that.
I understand, I understand. I saw that they could have given us that money, I mean, a lot, 2 billion dollars, a lot of money to be given. And it's in regards to improving the future of local government and a community wellbeing. That's all like a welfare payment to us as a city. I don't understand the engine behind that because great that we get that, but they don't need to be doing it for an asset. They could be just doing it outright and the other one is a real, yes, I'll leave it at that. They seem completely different achievements, but bundling it under a water reform. I'm missing something.
Well, I think one of, part of the feedback through over the last year has been an anxiety, I think, from some, from some members of local government that there, there was a lack of confidence in local government as a whole. And I think this is an indication from the Minister of Local Government, that is not the case. And given the legislation was changed to put the wellbeings back in, this is a signal to say, yes, we do want to support local government and communities and communities to thrive. And I think also a recognition of the climate change resilience issues are really stretching councils as well. So that's, we also saw money come through for flood resilience last year. So I think it's a recognition that those costs are pretty high for us.
Okay, I just see this.
We could tell them we don't want it if you want, it's an option.
No, we can say, well, it's still coming out of taxpayer money, not debating that. But there's a two different, two different, completely different things happening here. Of putting money in because I think that we need help as a local authority or the local people, which, okay, well, if they want to offer it us as a charity like that, by all means. But on the other hand, in taking away our local authority on our assets. So it just seems like two different things. I can't see how they're linked.
So this part is, some of this money is crown funding and some of this is release of equity from the water entities. So you've got, you have two components, I think, sitting in there. So you've got release of equity from the, from the water entities, that's the proposal, and some is crown funding. But I'll keep going on to Brian.
Keep going, keep going.
Yep, and we, okay, and I'm not keeping it on the chat box, sorry, Tim. Brian?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a question for this particular aspect, but I'm just thinking about the no worse off. And I'm trying to think, we're pretty up straight up with our things with our, you know, revenues that we're getting from our three waters, probably the water supply and so forth. But I'm just wondering, is that the same standard has been applied across the country? And does that have a variation? Because I'm looking at some, you know, there's some examples there where we're carrying debt for the asset. We're getting some revenue off that and I suppose, does that calculate, what, what we're next to is that, is that the loss of that revenue comparison to the debt that we're carrying? Because there are some councils that say that they have no debt on their three, their three waters or very little debt. And they're using it as a, basically a form of revenue. So.
I'll hand this to Pat, Brian?
Yeah, just give my head around that, is it, there seems to be different levels of debt for the asset. And that revenues are being applied differently, I suppose. So there's a bit of cross subsidisation going on or a bit of creative counting in terms of some councils or in terms of the way, where their debt lies and where the revenues are received from.
So I don't know if I call it creative accounting, different councils do things in different ways. I mean, we, we operate closed accounts where the costs sit where they fall. But I think the example was given of Wellington, where they supply their electricity, they sold their electricity, their power, their lines company to help fund major upgrades to their wastewater system and treatment system. Some councils have no debt at all. So, so they're handing over these assets, they will, they will lose, lose revenue. And yes, it's from some of the workshops, some of the national Zoom meetings, it's pretty clear that, that some councils have, are using money from their three waters to subsidise other activities. And some councils subsidising their, their three water activities from, from general rates. There's also been questions about councils who are using, dropping their wastewater charges as an economic incentive, which means once again, rates subsidising the wastewater activity. So I suspect there are 67 different ways of doing this. And that's one of the challenges WICs have had is trying to untangle all of this and why every council has something that's not quite right. But yeah, it's, there is, we, we operate a fairly pure system by national standards.
So just so I'm clear, actually, the three, you know, the three activities, wastewater, water supply and stormwater, all closed accounts. So the revenues, the debts are against those, those activities. And the revenues received are against those three activities separately.
And Nikki, this is where you come in and support your chief executive.
Yes, absolutely, Brian. So they, because they are closed.
Closed accounts.
Close accounts, we, we, as, actually ring fitting these is very, very easy for us because they're all separate, closed, targeted rates accounts. So the debt and the revenue is very, very clean.
Thanks, Nikki. Thanks, Brian.
Thanks.
Rohan?
That's actually my question answered.
Brilliant, okay. So we'll move along, we'll go back to what's, which slides are going to pop up next. I'll wait and see what it is, who's going to answer it. What have we got next?
So we can either go, we can go into the transition process or the.
I think we'll go to this one, I think, Jessica, and then we'll work our way through it. Because really, we need to start focusing on what we want to tell the government about areas that we think need, you know, if they're going to, you know, if they're looking at this, where we think improvement needs to be made. So some of the shared objectives are set out on the screen here. There are safeguards about, oops.
Sorry, sorry.
There are safeguards against privatisation. We might want to talk about whether we think they're strong enough or not. So I'm interested in that aspect. Improvements in obviously the safety and quality of water, environmental outcomes, equitable access to affordable three waters. And one of the intentions is that the, in each water services entity, every customer will pay the same base rate. So, so whether you, you know, in our case, an entity C, the base rate for water will be the same price here as it would be in Melbrae, as it would be in, in central Hawke's Bay. But council communities could order up if they wanted to. They could decide that they wanted the water entity to deliver them something a bit special. They decide that's what their community wants and I guess they can then negotiate to buy that additional service from the water entity. And then they would pay a different price if they want to have above the base level of service. So we need to talk about coordination of resources and planning and making sure for the system that it's, we've got regulatory coherence and institutional settings, which one of the factors, and I'm not sure we're going to get to that on these slides today, is the role of the economic regulator. And that's something new in our system and a really important sort of distinction about, about what, what is different. I think there might be a slightly tomato, tomato, otherwise Pat will probably talk to that and can relate the same situation here for environmental. And then these are the other sort of aspects that we're looking at. So importantly, we need to make sure that we've got resilience across the three waters. And we started to see that little impact from climate change and, and the fresh water standards and financial sustainability for entities, transparency and accountability and ability to, maybe it might say borrow, I'm going to have to change my, on a benchmark, which we can't do at the moment. So it's very, very difficult to benchmark across the country in retaining the placemaking role and wellbeing mandate. And I really would like to have a good conversation about those last two and the governance role. So let's see what the, and you just chip in here, Pat and Nikki, or Alec, if you've got anything to add to those ones. So, so areas for more discussion. So I guess, do we need anything more on the debt to revenue efficient inefficiencies part? We'll come to the non-financials first, anyone wants to back up again. Tim, you've got a further question or if you're ahead? No, okay. I think we've got the dashboard. Everyone's comfortable with the dashboard, what that says?
I've got one question on that.
All right, yeah, great.
Yeah, just looking at, just on those numbers on the dashboard where you've got the $1,050 current household cost per annum versus the $1,260 with reform. Is that with reform number, I'm guessing that's exclusive, not including inflation? Is that correct?
It is correct. It's some present, present day dollars.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Just going to say they were projecting very low inflation, otherwise.
And the 1,050, I think, is low. That's WIC's assessment of what we should be charging. I think our number is nearer $1,200 per household. Is it Nick? Is it not, Nikki?
It's 1,300, excluding, including just actually, so yeah.
How much?
1,300 dollars, including GST.
13.60 or 13, just 13?
It's 1,297, I think.
Plus GST.
Including GST.
All right, any, so any other questions on the financials? No, they're good. Okay, right, we'll whip back to the other slide, see what's coming next. Okay, so I think we're good on that one. We've got to come to the non.
Sorry.
Oh, Rohan, yeah.
Just, just one more question. So does that mean that they're expecting that, that we'll see a reduction in charges under the reform?
Not, not straight away. They think it'll take them, you know, three to five years to start achieving efficiencies. They've got to combine, into the C, I think, is to combine 22 councils. So getting that sorted, getting their house in order and then starting to apply efficiencies. I think they're, my recollection, they're talking three to five years before you start to see things tracking down. And they're, they're talking about achieving these efficiencies over 20 years. So I think WICs was imposed a 2% per annum target on Scottish Water to drive their costs down. So it's a long-term objective. So I expect that you'd see a little bit of a go up and then, then start to, to drop down.
How many councils are in, in that boat where if you exclude inflation, that they're expecting present, in present day costs, a reduction in, in, from current day by 2051?
I've seen some information that Wimaker Riri think that they can achieve that. That was their assessment, but WICs doesn't think anyone can achieve that. There's no one on their own. In fact, our number, Rohan, is the second lowest. I think Watercare, if they continue to stand on their own, they would rise to about $1,900 in 2050. And I think we're the second lowest of the country at 2,300. I've seen some information that Wimaker Riri think they can get down to 900, 910, I think it was. But I, I haven't looked into how they, they calculated that.
Yeah, so I, I mean, under, under the reform itself, how many of the councils, whereas is it expected to be in 2051 less than what they're currently doing on their own?
Everybody, everybody wins on this. So Auckland's number drops from 1,900 to 800. So everybody wins, it's just some win more than others, but it's, it's good for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Pat, do you want to talk about Tomata Arawa and the Water Services Bill?
Yes, just give me a second, Rachel. I had some notes and I've got rid of them again. So one of the things that's becoming clear is they have been, there's always been no enforcement of the drinking water standards under the Health Act. It's, and one of the things that we have talked about is that this is sparked by, by Havlock North, where there were five and a half thousand cases of campylerbacter and four deaths. But in 1996, Ashburton had 19 cases of campylerbacter, 33 probable from water supply. Havlock North had another incident in 1998 with campylerbacter in its water supply. And Garfield in 2012 had 29 cases and 109 probables. You recall this, this was the information that was presented to us when we were talking about our water, water supply by law. So it's not as if, as an industry, industry, we have done well, which is why one of the recommendations from the Havlock, Havlock North Inquiry was the, to establish a drinking water regulator, which is what they've done. And, and that means that, as, as we've said before, you can't assume that the status quo today is going to apply for the next 30 years. In fact, you can't assume it's going to apply for the next five years. This Water Services Bill that establishes Tomata Arawa and the regulations around it, it's, they're, they're very tough provisions here. 300, maximum penalty of $300,000 for an individual and it can be $50,000 for a staff member. So they're taking this very seriously and one and a half million dollars for organisations. So drinking water standards, the standards have been in place for some years, but this is simply going to be tough enforcement of them. The other thing, this is where we think a lot of the money is going to come from. There is a strong suggestion there are going to be minimum wastewater discharge standards set. And that'll set a baseline for all resource consents for wastewater treatment plants in the future. Doesn't mean that's the standard that's gets set, that's just the minimum standard. And that is also going to see costs rise and levels of tolerances for overflows are going to, going to, going to reduce as well. And I was at a meeting where Ellen Pragnell from DIA was talking to all the MERS and CE's throughout the country and, oh, sorry, Area C. And the comment was that really, will wastewater ponds still be a practical solution in the future? They, they were a great solution in the 1960s and 1970s as we started to provide some treatment. But they are a natural process, you can't control them and the change of seasons, standards tend to slip, which is why we have mechanical plant associated with our oxidation ponds now. But there's an awful lot of the country relies on those and that will change. And then we have stormwater standards. So you'll see that our stormwater costs are, debt to revenue ratio there is, is big because we're spending a lot on stormwater. And while we are looking, working hard to improve the standard of our rivers and streams, we're only just starting to grapple with, with stormwater quality. And that's going to be another big cost driver. So I really do think that, that, that's where the, the biggest costs are going to fall is wastewater and stormwater. So anyone who's looking at what we're doing now and saying that we, we are okay is, is not looking at the future.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, so it's a big change coming there. We've also got sitting in there the economic regulator and consumer protection. So we, we put that something new in the system, so you will have an economic regulator proposed. There's discussion around what consumer protection will be there and we're waiting on a bit more. Whether we may see some more information come, come out on that. I'm not sure how far away that'll be, that'll be a new stand-up that we don't have at the moment in terms of the system. So I just wonder if we should probably move on, just thinking about time, because Dan's going to join us shortly to try and sort of work through the next steps. This is a very, this is the governance model. I do want to spend some time getting your feedback on this because this is one area that, you see this wiring diagram here, which it sets out, I may not have any pointer. You will, you'll see at the top of the diagram, you've got your, basically your local ownership. So the intention is that in each entity, the local authorities will be the named owners of the entity. And then we will also be, then there's a, what's called a, a regional representative group. And that will be made up of local authority representatives and also mana finua representatives. And there have been, and this is one area where there are questions, as in you might have, is why are mana finua coming into this space? Why are mana finua going to be the, the involved in here? They're not the owners, so you see at the top, local ownership is there, but why is mana finua here? And this is pretty much a, a bottom line for the government. They've said, no, they want to move through with mana finua representation, which is, which is a reflection of the Tumana O T Y principles that are coming into the new, the new legislation and the new Tomara Atuwa, the new environmental regulator. And you'll see that the importance of water to, to Maori is very well known. So that's, you know, a significant principle. So that's starting to see that sort of, that embedded. We've also seen that change across our planning legislation and, and. We've also seen that change across our planning legislation and um and our way of operation. Even at, across what we do in local government is, is now reflecting far more of the Treaty of Waitangi. Um although this is not a, this is not a Crown relationship, this is a um mana finua um relationship, so with Ewi. And then you have a process where that group appoints and monitors an independent selection panel that then appoints and monitors the um entities board. Off to the side, you've got um the representative group being responsible during the statement and um statement of performance expectations, the statement of intent process and the key planning and strategic documents. And you've got a, a very direct mana finua produced the Tumana O T Y statements and statement of expectations coming through here as well. So that's that, those purple boxes, the three that come down here, they're very familiar to us. So they're very much the process that we go through and we work on with our um CCOs and CCTOs. So you're very familiar with it. What we've got along, you know, sitting alongside it on the other side, you start to see all the other components who are here. So Tumata Arawa, the environmental regulator, the regi- regional councils that'll be there, um you know, as a unitary, remember we always have that division of the regulator, which is going to come along, the compliance part, the new economic regulator and the consumer body, which is going to have, give local customers a voice in the process. One of the parts where we've had a lot of feedback is that this, this getting from the purple box to the orange box is um too convoluted and too distant. And I just want to test this out with you in terms of this is the round governance control and how comfortable you are with this, with this box. Quite a few of the councils that I've been meeting with over the last few weeks have said, no, they want this to be um closer. They want to have more influence over the strategic um direction of the organizations. And this isn't about delivering our plans. It's around the sort of things that, you know, we would put into an SOA, SOI, SOI process. So I just want to get your feedback on that. There's been consideration of whether we do go more to the Tasmanian model. So if you watch the webinars around that, we use it, you know, where, where there's a direct um appointment of the board. One thing we have to achieve though is balance sheet separation. So um and that's important both for the Crown. So the Crown don't want the entities sitting directly on their balance sheet. Otherwise, it really constrains the Crown's ability to borrow. They would, they, if they're on the unconsolidated balance sheet, that might be doable. But at the moment, they're not in this model. So the Crown's not here. And we, if we have entities sitting on our balance sheets, then we are constrained to respect to the constraint that we have on the ability to borrow. So any thoughts on the governance model and how that could be improved? And any questions about understanding it as well, Mel?
So Rachel, um appreciate what you've said. I'd like to take us through slowly each one of these um levels of, of management here, starting with the Regional Representation Group. Their role, the Independent Selection Panel, their role, the Entity Board Decision Makers, their role. And then Entity Management, that's sort of in the same beigey sort of colored um box.
Yep.
And uh that looks like a lot of bureaucracy to me.
Yes, it does to me too, Mel. So I, I'm not, um so I'll put my cards on the table. I want to see a change here. So that's one of the reasons this particular um area was not agreed between local government, New Zealand and the Crown. So we said, no, well, this needs further work um is, is local government, New Zealand. And so the ministers said, right, will you go and tell us, go out to talk to sector and come back with a better idea than what we've got here? So um Pat, if you want to chip in here to, to, to talk us, to, do you want to do the talking through the elements or just for, so there's a change of voice? Are you happy for me to do it?
No, I'm happy to have a go, Rachel. So the intention is that um so the, if you were starting at the top left-hand corner with the local ownership, so that for NTC, there will be twenty-two local authorities. And I'm, I'm not sure how many Ewi would be sitting in the mana finua box. But the, the attention would be that then, and this is all about this balance sheet separation um that Rachel talked about. Um and then the, the local authorities, the twenty-two of them would appoint six, up to six local authority representatives who would sit with, with six mana finua representatives on that regional represent, representation group. And then that group, and this is, this is the, the piece that really I, I, I struggle with is they then appoint an independent selection panel whose only role is then to appoint the entity board. And could I just point out now?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you.
That, that none of those layers of bureaucracy are management. Those are all governance layers. They are um so that entity management is where the chief executive and the um, and the staff sit right down the bottom. So it's, it's a and so the entity board, that would be a board of, of, of professional directors. So that's how that board, that's how that board gets appointed. And that's where there's been all um meetings I've been at. A lot of pushback from mayors and councils throughout the country about how can we, and how do we have any influence? And very different from the Tasmanian model, which was more like a CCO. So it's it's how do we get more input into being able to have a conversation with um the Chair of the Board and the Chief Executive um without this massive buffer in between and without damaging the, the um balance sheet separation. Do you, did you want me to talk about some of the um?
Where do we fit in there? Where do we get our voice for Nelson in this, this hierarchy?
So at the moment, you would be sitting in, in local ownership. And I think that you would be hoping that, that out of those twenty-two councils, that, that um that one of the six local authority representatives would be from Teta EU, from top of the south. Um who would then appoint the independence help with six Ewi reps to appoint the independent selection panel. So it's, it is a, um it is a, a very long arms-length relationship now. It really is.
Thanks for your honesty with that, Pat. I do appreciate it. Because that's exactly what it looks like to me too. And um, you know, I sort of the funny feeling down my spine and you talk about efficiencies and then you project them out right out to two thousand fifty, I mean, twenty fifty-one or something. Um yeah, with a structure like that, I just cannot see. Uh and then you say, oh, we're not going to see them for five years. I, I I beg to say that, differ and say that um I don't think you'll see any at all, quite frankly.
So the, that's, that's a structure that appoints the board. But that board is going to be, and the entity management are going to be answer to Tumata Arawa about um uh improving the standards of drinking water, wastewater and stormwater. The economic regulator is also going to be talking to the board and they're going to be saying we're looking at what the best practice in the UK, Scotland and, and the EU, and your costs are too high, get them down. So there's going, and the regional councils will also be the ones responsible for setting water um uh wastewater and stormwater discharge standards. So there will be a lot of input coming in from that side. So the, the efficiencies start to come from the entity board down. The efficiency drive is within the orange box. Uh everything above that is all, is really about appointing the board that then gets on with the job of running it. So uh i- if it was a normal process, this, the struc- the top structure might get together once a year as, as directors come up for renewal. Um but it may be that the local ownership appoints their, their, their representatives to the regional representative group every three years. So that those top two layers, the top layer may only meet once at the start of a triennium to appoint the local authority representatives that may meet once or twice a year to review appointments to the um independent selection panel. And then the independent selection panel maybe annually appoints someone to the entity board. It's so that the top piece doesn't do much, doesn't meet all the time.
So Pat, the only thing I'd say is, look at it, and I know Dan's, Dan's right, so I'll, I'll come on, I'll say hello to Dan in a minute. And if you want to add anything, Dan, just but you raise your hand and you'll, I'll be able to see you. The only other thing I can see in there is, is see that line that runs between the local ownership directly to the entity. And there is, there will be an expectation that the entities are directly reporting to councils. So they will need to come and present just as our, she, as our you know, port company, port company, they'll have to come and um present and have a direct relationship with the owners is um in terms of delivering the services that need to be delivered around planning, around our planning. So that, that would be the link that's here. But my view is this is too convoluted and it's too far away from um influence over the directors. So um how we can, that, that's an era. I, I don't know the solution yet, Mel, but I'd like to see that changed.
Well, I, I like, I'm liking what I hear. So thank you for that, your reaction to that. Um there's no uh local body representatives at all on that um entity board? The decision makers?
On the direct entity uh, well, I said, I actually don't know that there's been a thinking to go, could you be excluded if you were a competency? If it's company-based board and you were competent to do it, I don't know the answer to that, Mel. I'm, I'm Dan, right? I don't know if there was an exclusion.
I, I haven't heard an exclusion, but I think the presumption around it is that it's not that it's a complete separation.
Yes, I think the, the report that the government's working on from those thirty-two people that visited the uh Tasmania and Scotland and the UK sort of made that quite clear that there was to be no local government representatives on that entity board.
Not directly, no.
I read that.
Okay. Thanks, Mel. Okay, I'll go on to Tim and then Brian and then Pete. And then I'm probably going to hand over to the next slide to Dan.
Thank you. So again, understanding who's going to be governing, making decisions for water, for Nelson, you're going to have going to that chart, you're going to have Ewi from the top of the south on that and non-Ewi from somewhere else.
You'll have, you'll have, in this case, for entity C, you'll have all of the owners, which will be all of the councils. And then coming into the Regional Representation Group, you'll have representatives from all of the Ewi across all of the council areas. If that makes sense. And they'll have to put nominations up. How that's going to happen? This is a area, we had, um we had an entity C Zoom earlier this week with all the councils. And this is an area where we've looked at. And we did talk about the fact that we're used to operating with a mu- much bigger structure than, you know, than six and six, we can do that. But that's, that's the intention, Tim. Yeah.
Okay. And so in the non-Ewi, they will come from, they'll come from, from where though? I'm, I'm trying to understand is who will be on that will actually have a skin in the game. At the moment, we have skin in the game when we make decisions right or wrong for our water supply direct to our customers. Um this, you'll have those from a broader area, but may not have anything in no, no ties to, to Nelson. Am I? It's going to be difficult getting the right people on the board to represent everybody or anybody. So how's that? I still don't, I don't understand. You get, you'll get Ewi and you'll get non-Ewi. The non-Ewi could be from anywhere on the country on that board, doing what they think is best for us, but not really living here, understanding or even knowing the lay of the land.
No, those people will, the people that will be governing it, like in our roles, what would be now at the entity board, which is in my, what is showing as an orange box. But what we also need to talk about is um how we get the services that we need delivered to our region for growth and development. And that's a different function around how does the council get its plan. So we need to deliver our plan up. And so this is the plan that we need. And this is what we want delivered. And so that's a different conversation to this one. Which I think we're going to come to in a minute.
So that direction of input, it's got to go two ways. It's so you've got the input from those who are on the board. And then you'll have the input from us, like you're saying, we might say, hey, we need more of this or less of that. It's got informations. So I'm just giving my understanding because it's around this ownership change or not ownership, but governance change and ownership change. How this is all going to work? Because it's just it's quite, it's a huge change. It's a huge change, which really detaches from the customer.
I'll go across, I'll go across to Dan.
So I'm missing something here.
Hi, Dan. And hopefully, I met Dan the other day, remember was on the call? You've met.
Can I, Dan?
Hi, I, I was just going to try and um help you out a bit there, Tim, and say that traditionally in local government, we, you know, the accountability for the community and the local issues would come down the model. You know, from, from the owners down through to the entity and backup.
Yep.
This, this model is not set up that way. It's actually set up, the accountability up that way is really weak. You know, you've just been talking about the independent selection panel and and how that just confuses things. The accountability really is trying to be being built out to the side. Now, I'm not for a minute suggesting that it's all there yet, but it's really around, you know, the, the local priorities, the local influence, the um local needs are supposed to come through in the alignment of planning documents. You know, the, the entity and Nelson are going to have agreed infrastructure priorities that are set out somewhere in those, in these regional infrastructure plans. So it's actually around the side. That's where your, your role actually becomes around the side rather than down top to bottom. And also with the regulators and the consumer body, if that's the Water Ombudsman, that's, the accountability is coming in this way rather than down. So it is a really big difference, really big difference to try and understand how it works.
So we're on a, we're on a bus, but we're not, no one's here seated. We're all hanging on from the outside, from the windows, basically hanging on the outside of the bus as it's traveling and hopefully in the right direction. This is coming from the side. I still can't see how this gets any benefit to Nelson or Wellington or anyone else as far as a governance ownership. And I see it's trying to fulfill this sort of partnership. And I see there's this um mana finua um and treaty principle, but then it seems to deviate completely from treaty in regards to us being one people, two cultures. You know what you're doing here? You've gotten two peoples on one culture. As far as that side of it goes. And as far as any sort of governance structure, any sort of organization, it, it seems to be slicing it, dicing it in such a way that once again, none of us are actually in that, on that boat or on that bus. We're actually on the outside, trying to hang on. But um thank you, I do, I just see a lot, lot of weaknesses there.
Okay, we'll see if we can.
I'm listening. I've got my ears open. I'm listening.
We'll see if we can tease some more of that out in a minute. So um Brian and then Pete and then Dan, I think we're going to put up the quadrant slide next. Okay.
Um yeah, I'm not sure. I'm just trying to keep my head around. And I'm just wondering the role of councils tends to be community representative. So we represent the community, bring their views forward. I'm not sure that sits well as a, in a governance role. So I, I understand about the um getting a professional board, you know, professional entity board. You've got water engineers, you've got lawyers and accountants and environmental engineers and people who um who are well qualified, well placed to um provide the governance for a large water entity. And I'm just wondering, um just how this regional representative group would work and how Nelson's views or interests uh are carried forward. And I'm just trying to think about, you know, um do we, you know, is it a bit like an election for, you know, um to go on the, on, on that representative board? Or is it calculated on terms of asset value that would bring uh, that's going to the water entity? I'm, I'm not sure. Sorry, a bit more thought about, about that. And I really would like to see a, a real strengthening of that um uh, you know, statement of intent or statement of objectives or things like that. That actually drives the board to deliver the outcomes that, you know, the community are wanting to see. Um reasonably familiar with the way we do it with our SOI, but even that can be a bit of a, a slow ponderous sort of a process. So is there any thoughts about how that strategic and intent is, is put through and um keep, without getting bogged down into the operational level where, you know, a pipeline down the street is more important than a pipeline down another street in another city? Any, any, any thoughts about what?
Um.
That up?
Okay, I'll just start the last one, Brian. I don't think this is where you decide which pipes go where. Okay, so I don't.
That's so.
That's, that's not the mechanism. But if you were thinking about some of the things that we put into the SOI, SOE discussions, you think about the things that because we don't decide those factors for Port Nelson or the airport. But what we do put in there are, um we have discussions about um environmental outcomes. We have, which will be partly either on the, on the other side of the diagram. But we might have discussions around living wage or all sorts of things like that. So they are the sorts of things we'd see in there. So yes, I think there are some real questions about how is this going to work? And um if anyone on this slide's got the answers, now's your chance. Um, if anyone on this slide's got the answers, now's your chance to speak up. I think the answer is it's too opaque at the moment.
Yeah, to me, I think the hinge is around the, um. The connection between the owners' representatives, okay, councils' representatives and the, um, and the entity board. I guess probably with a pivotal, to me, that's where the pivotal relationship is and the mechanism about making it work.
Yeah, I'd agree with you. Okay, so that would be, that's a bit of feedback I think we should give. And we'll, that will start doing a summary of those points. Someone's doing those now. Okay. I haven't got anyone else with their hand up. So, oh, sorry, Pete, you did, you disappeared on me. Hang on. Sorry, I swear. No, and I've got Pat too. Okay, and Gail. Right. Sorry, Pete, you're on.
So in terms of getting our heads around this and, um, making some attempt to bring the public along on the ride. I think some comparison with other major entities that council deals with would be helpful. For instance, um, the relationship that we have with Waka Kotahi. Um, most people have got their heads around how that works. You know, they're a national body that, um, looks after transport services. We engage with them. Generally, the public, well, generally the public are at a certain point with how much they understand. Although I still think a large proportion of the public don't realise that we don't actually own or operate Rock's Road. But anyway, that's something else. I just, I, I think that most people understand that relationship. Then we've got the health reforms, which is an interesting kind of comparison because. Most people understood what happened previously with, um, with our local DHBs and boards and stuff. That's all changing. And if you look at the model of the new health regime, the way that it's set up. It's not dissimilar to the model that, that we're looking at on the screen right now. And that there's separate entities from Mari and everybody else. And there's a layer of decision making that delivers the product at the bottom end, which has a local content. Obviously, there's always going to be a local content. I think that what we're looking at now on screen is way more complicated than the model that the, that the government's put up for health. And I just kind of want to know why. So. And at the very least, some comparison between those different entities, if it was explained, all those comparisons were drawn. Both elected members to try and get their heads around. Would have a flow on effect for the general public to be able to understand what's been put in front of us a little bit better. I don't know whether that's useful or not.
I think that's really helpful. I think it's a really good idea. So I think we could do a bit of a mapping exercise. I think some of the fundamentals here is where the money comes from, but I'll come across to Pat. Did you want to add something on the structural?
So I, so I don't think there's any doubt. This is probably the most complicated establishment monitoring, uh, appointment and, and monitoring. Process I've ever seen and puts anything else in the shade. And I think that's all about this trying to achieve this balance sheet separation. Um, so we haven't done, uh, gone to a great deal of effort to explain it because that would look like we're defending it. And we, um, we don't particularly like it. But because there's, there's some, some of the things in here, um, some, some of the provisions aren't even shown on the diagram. So the regional representative group, they would, uh, issue the equivalent of a letter of expectation. And from that, the board would, would issue the equivalent of a statement of intent. So that's the closest there is to the process we have with relationship to our CCOs at the moment. But it's, it's not, the council may not have a representative on that regional representative group unless the numbers have dramatically increased. But on top of that, um, the board will have to, uh, engage with the, the consumers and communities. On the preparation of an investment prioritisation methodology. So that's what are they going to do about growth? What are they going to do about lifting drinking water standards? Uh, and where's the money going to go on their asset management plan and the funding and pricing plan? And the entity will be required to take that feedback into account and actually has to make public a report. On how it has, uh, taken that feedback into consideration. So as, as, um, Dan was saying, there's a, there's a lot of work going out on the side. It's that, that purple dot, uh, block called key planning and strategic documents. They're also exposed to establish a, a consumer forum, um, that will provide them with assistance and advice on their engagement and their, and their feedback processes. So there is a, a lot more that's not in this diagram, but it does get, um, uh. Very, very complicated if you try and show all of, all of that in the diagram. And it, yes, and I agree with what Pete says, it's, um, very hard to explain, um, to anyone.
Thanks, Pat. I've gone to Gail.
Um, thanks, Rachel. Look, yeah, totally agree with Peyton. Said a lot of, um, what I was thinking about, about Taki when I'm looking at this diagram. And working out how, how, how it all comes together and what it all means. So what I do know is that there is a lot of, um, there's a lot of talk in the community. Um, and there's a lot of misunderstanding, probably because there's been a, a gap. It hasn't been, um, there hasn't been a pretty, there hasn't been a straightforward dialogue about what, what it actually means. I think the idea is out there, but people actually really want to know, they're not dumb. They actually want to know how it's going to work in actual terms. So the things that I've heard are the local ownership and they don't understand that. Can we explain that better? How does it fit with the customer? How do they get their store, you know, if they've got an issue, I mean. It's two things for the customer. It's cost and it's, and it's the, um, services. So if they've got a problem with the services, how's it going to look under a new system? They want some certainty of quality of the environment. So these are all things. I think they've got every right to know. And I think that it's really important that it's explained better, actually, so that we can understand it too. But I think those are the, there's some fairly basic stuff that's not actually, um, explained very well. And I think it's important that, that particularly ownership and what happens on, on a household level. If I have a problem, how's that going to look any different to what it is now? Is it going to change? How am I going to have some certainty on that? Um, that diagram is horrendous, actually. I mean, somebody's probably spent days and weeks and months on it, but, um, if they're going to, if it's actually going to look like that in the end. I think they need to take the colours away and explain what each one is in a, in a real term. Um, yeah, good luck. But I think we've actually made some progress and each time we have a, a webinar and, and a discussion, I think it definitely helps. Um, but the important thing is not, it, it's us as well, but it's, it's our, it's our residents, that's our ratepayers. And I, I, you know, I'd like them to be comfortable. I, I don't like the uncertainty that that creates. I've got a lot of other stuff going on. Let's just tell a story, perhaps of some examples is helpful as well. Uh, take an example and explain this is what it will mean in a story, not cartoon. But a story format of what it actually will mean for individuals. I think that's all I've got in feedback. Look, I think it's important that we do feed, um, suggestions on, thank you for asking about the governance model. Because the thing that is of concern, so thank you for the opportunity to, um, have another, have another go at this.
Thanks, Gail. Okay. And we'll come to a moment that how the customers, what the customers experience is intended to be like. And I'll, when I hand across to Dan. So look, Dan, I reckon we've probably, it's, it, do you want to have any last points on the governance at the moment? We're not solving it all today. So this is like round one on governance, safe to say. Mel, did you, do you have any last points just on the governance model? And then we'll move on to the next slide.
Follow up on what Gail said and say that don't underestimate the community. I am amazed actually how many of them are researching every aspect of this. They are certainly going at it, looking at the Scottish model and the UK model and the Tasmanian model. And it is very much, um, front of mind for a lot of Nelson people. So I would not say that they're lost or they need some direction on this. They, they certainly are, to my pleasant surprise, a big number of them are all over it. Now, the question I have for Pat, just before you go off it, is the, he said there'll be no representation on the regional. Representation group, I think it is, yeah, for Nelson. Is that the one that's going to have twelve members, Pat, is it? And we'd be lucky to get one on that. Is that for the?
Yeah.
I, I, all I was saying was that there'll be twenty two councils sitting in that top left-hand purple box. And, and the way it's set up at the moment, there's a max, there's a provision for a maximum of six local authority representatives to get onto the regional representative group. So my rough calculation would be that what the focus would be that Nelson Marlborough and Tasman would focus on getting one from the, making sure there was one from the top of the South. On that regional representative group. And maybe someone from Nelson Mill, um, but that's what Rachel was talking about. Maybe that, that expands to, to having one representative from, from every council.
Man of Tinoa are on that too. Are they six on that as well?
That's the proposal. And I guess this is where we need to give feedback. In that chat box. I've said, I heard Pat made a comment to say, so what I've said is we, and we will be able to appoint somebody, but with other councils. Or we may, um, place votes for candidates. I don't know. We could do it that way. We could all be voting for candidates. It could be like a, um, I've had been seeing governance structures and cooperatives appointed that way. We might ask for a larger representation group or a direct appointment from the regional representation group to the board directors. So that would be taking out that independent selection panel now. Dan's probably going to tell me that, that, that'll create some problems about balance sheet separation, but I want to really test that out. Because I still think this is overly complicated. Thanks, Mel. Great questions.
And actually, I was just going to jump in. I see a question. Chat about whether this is, um, how similar this is to Watercare.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
And perhaps at the bottom's the best place to start to answer that question. Watercare has customers. Yep. It deals directly with, um, its customers. There is an entity called Watercare that has a management that is separate from council and it has a board that is separate from council. It does statements of intent, statement of expectation, it produces its asset management plans, it does all of those purple boxes. But where it differs is that the one, two, three, four, five boxes that sit above the orange Watercare box. They are combined into one for Watercare. It is Auckland Council. Auckland Council decides how it holds Watercare to account. It decides how it's going to point the directors. Um, so it is a, a simplified version of this. Um, if that makes sense. But partly, part of that is because it's a single entity. Um, and within Auckland Council, there is the Independent Maori Statutory Board, um, which, what fits into the governance model of Auckland Council. But because it is a single organisation, there is some simplicity around the top half of that.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Look, I want to move on to the next slide, but if you've got governance questions, sort of, we'll tease them out. So I wanted to just put up the next slide because Dan, Dan, you remember this one from last time? And Dan's advice was, it was, look, he felt, you know, he said, you can focus on the model, but that's probably not where we should be focusing. Let's have a look at the, the other parts of this. So Dan, can, can I hand it across to you to help us sort of work through this? And Rohan's got his hand up. So after you've had a bit of a chat about this, we'll go to him first just to capture his question.
Yeah, um, thanks, Rachel. Um, despite me joining you last time to talk extensively through the financials and the WIC data. Um, my real plea is for every council to try and get past that and look at the much bigger picture of the impacts of what this will mean for your community, for the council. The provision of services, the impact on your staff. Um, and think about a broader set of factors to feed back up. Because in a sense, there's very little us as a sector going back up to the government and saying, oh, DIA, we don't, we don't think your modelling of twelve hundred and sixty dollars is right. We think it should be fourteen hundred and fifty. That's not going to change anything. But telling DIA what's important to our communities and our councils and where there are gaps in that structure that have developed. And suggestions for what that should be is where we can influence the shape of this reform. And this is not intended to be an exhaustive list of all the things that are important. It's supposed to be a starting point for discussion. And what I've found, um, and observed to be quite useful around other council tables is using this as a starting point for saying, well, what are the most important things to the Nelson community? What is, what are the hot points for our community and our council that we need to see addressed in any model? And therefore the gaps in the current model. Um, and I, and I think that's quite a useful way to, to, to get the ideas about what's important. What's the model? Where are the gaps? What do we need to see improvements rather than focus on the dollars?
Thanks, Dan. Okay, so, um, we do this by quadrant. We'll go to Rohan for your question and then we'll do this maybe by starting with the service quadrant and work around workforce and then social community wellbeing.
Yeah, sorry. My question was more on the, um, the governance. Just, uh, in terms of those twenty two councils that would be put into entity C, I was just curious how many, um, sit in a sort of. Fairly similar boats to NCC. He was sort of talking that, you know, maybe top of the South would be able to get one representative. But I'm, I'm thinking that probably you'd be more likely to try and align alongside the, the needs of, um, and the specifics of the. Of our communities and, and where other places in that entity might have sort of similar, um, needs and concerns or be in a similar position.
Yeah, you could do it that way, Rohan. In fact, I talked about that with, I forget, might have been Dunedin City Council the other day around. Yeah, you could align it around, um, rural councils, you know, provincial, you could do it that way. There is no formula yet. So if that we thought that might be of value.
Yeah.
I don't know, Pat, what, what, who's similar to us, I suppose. Um, Napier's quite similar, right?
Yes, maybe it would be the most similar to us. Yeah.
Yeah. It's an option.
Yeah, there is no hard and fast rules about how that group is established at the moment. And there is certainly room within the model at the moment for the different entities have different approaches to how that regional representative group is brought together.
Brian.
Yeah, to the mute off. Just going back to the three W metrics and I'm just thinking about, um. You know, what's important to our local community and, and the ones that sort of stick to my mind is that they. Wanting the provision of clean, fresh drinking water at all times and plenty of it. So I think that would be one of the biggest ones. It's become very, very apparent that they've got absolutely is. Low to zero tolerance for wastewater discharges into the, um, into the marine environment or even the freshwater environment. Just look at the backlash we get every time we have to close Ternanui Beach Nelson Haven after a heavy rainfall event. Which takes on to a, um, a system where we've got a stormwater system that actually can cope with, uh, heavy rainfall events and the, and the stormwater. And then, um, just thinking, we've just gone through the, uh, resource consents for Bell's Island and the discharge of. Uh, wastewater or just, um, into a marine environment from the likes of Bell's Island and Nelson North, I think is going to get less and less tolerant. So I suppose the expectation is that in future, that we're looking at things like discharge to land and other, other options of disposing of, um, treated wastewater. So you're focusing on those sorts of outcomes. And what is important to our community is how do we go about achieving that? And more importantly, how do we go about paying for it?
So Brian, would you say that our community, I think from the feedback we've had from our community, they, they're pretty strong on water quality? I don't, but I think they would be a, I think they would be expecting, you know, the standards to be, to be there from Tomara, Tomara Atuai. And, and I think we will start to see a push to change our way we're disposing of wastewater.
Oh, so that, and I think the inundation, uh, into the stormwater system, particularly in heavy rainfall events. Um. You know, it just, it causes those spills into the, into the, um, the marine environment or coastal environment. You know, when we're, look at the backlash we get every time we've got a sort of old Ternanui Beach is closed until it has, you know, a tide's gone past. It's, um, and then you look at what Tasman have had to cope with, with, uh, water restrictions. Um, that does. Yeah, so having a, having a fresh water, a water supply, they can cope with, you know, the day-to-day needs throughout the, uh, throughout the season, throughout the year.
So if we were to, if, just look just from elected members, does anyone disagree on that? I think our community will have a reasonable expectation that we, you know, compliance with standards and an increase in standards. Expect, that, that would be a reasonable expectation. I don't, I don't think we, with what we know about our community, they're pretty, be engaged on the subject. Anyone disagree? Any disagreement? Kate, Tom? So to unmute, Kate.
Goodness me. Okay, long day. Um, I completely agree with Brian. I think that, um, what he said already is, is really important to our community. I'd add to that, that I would have thought that environmental restoration alongside, that's really important. So, um. For example, Bell's Island, I know they bought some land to, um, discharge solid waste onto land. I know this is water, but I presume that. For example, Bell's Island, I know they bought some land to discharge solid waste onto land, I know this is water, but I presume that the. Affluent from Bell's Island is part of the picture. So, you know, how how are we doing environmental restoration alongside improving water quality in our stormwater network, our freshwater network, so. Consequences for the Maitei River when we extract extract. Water from the roading rather than from the dam in the summer months, that kind of thing, so how do we improve? The local environmental water network alongside improving our drinking water quality. There's one thing I wanted to add, which I've just remembered, is I think. When we're hearing about these sort of boards and highly qualified people sort of managing our water, I really, really support that. But I think a social procurement policy is really important to us, I think it's important that we are employing locals, that there's. Fair pay, that there's equity in terms of pay, there's. Female representation, minority group representation, that our boards. Are not necessarily being paid high commercial or corporate rates, I mean, I heard what the chief executive of Auckland Port got played, and I just. You know, that I, I think that's quite important to us, that distribution of wealth is fair. So to me, that's an important part of looking at new models.
Thank you, feedback, okay, it's really helpful.
Was that helpful? I know we were talking about environment, but I feel like.
No, 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 no.
While I was thinking about it, I just feel like a highly commercial model where people. That where the gap between highly paid people and people who are being paid maybe only just living wages, it's it's not something which. I think our community is looking to try and change that economic way of thinking for the future.
Okay, thanks Kate.
An entirely unrepresentative survey, but I hear the same thing about. Social procurement and ensuring contractors in small communities remain viable, that's a really recurring theme and it's. I think it's important to put up, because the government's model was about efficiency.
Yeah.
His responses, yeah, efficiency is one thing, but there's, there's a social cohesive element that needs to be brought in, there's quite. Counter to put forward if that's the position of councils and councils generally.
And it's about equitable pay, that people should be paid what they're worth, but you know, do you have three chief executives? I don't know, it's, it's a very big model, but how do you ensure that you're remunerated? Or you're paid for your work, but there's not that big gap, which we sometimes see in most more corporate models.
Okay, I'm capturing those in the chat box, I'll go across to Tom. Oh, you've gone Tom, no, Rohan.
Yeah, I just thought I'd add in terms of.
Oh, oh, sorry, Tom.
Sorry, sorry, my fault, I hit the hand down rather than mute down. Yeah, I've probably a mix of views, but yes, obviously public are always wanting better water, et cetera, we are very blessed with a very good water supply. Through, through summer and winter. And then there's a commentary about our beaches, et cetera, so, but. There's always going to be a bit of misunderstanding, at this point, there's a bit of misunderstanding around the table, and that when we have those signs up around Haven Road. After a heavy rain or storm events about the. Pollution in the water, that's not from our sewer plant, that's from just what happened. Anywhere when you have a heavy rain running into our rivers off the land, you get a lot of the pollutants that get run off, there are occasion when our. When our pumps get overwhelmed, but. Public is one point will be saying, hey, we want to improve on all these sorts of things, but on the other hand, they're going to say, well, what cost does that come to? And I see a bit of talk about maybe we should be putting our water not to. Where we've got it at the moment, put it to land, but then we're still trying to find the solutions here now, rather than this new entity or the existing entity. To find that solution, and then what we're doing then is having a solution from outside. And we end up like have like Northers is due to them putting sewage on their land, it's from them. Putting it there and it's getting mixed into the, to the water supply or aquifers, ours is quite different, we get our water from up in the hills and we. And we dispose of our wastewater up in towards and that on Bell's Island, et cetera. But if we start trying to find the solutions now, and the public aren't that silly, I know there's always going to be misunderstandings of public wonder why and how. How can we get this water inundation and our stormwater, how can we get the beaches closed at times? When we do know exactly what causes much of that, and I think we are able to put solutions, so I'm just. I think it'd be a mix of public, the public saying, yes, whatever the cost to improve it, and there'd be a public going, well, I think we're doing extremely good job, always looking for improvements. But at what cost, eightfold the debt? And it becomes a nationwide debt rather than a local debt, but it still hits our pockets. And the public understand that if we transfer our debt to international. To the government, then it's still going to hit our pockets and our taxes, so. There'll be, there'll be two views, there'll be two takes on this. That's my take on it.
Thanks Tom, I think it's really helpful, I just want to pick up that, that about where the debt lies, so Dan. I think this is one of the governance structure models, is that the intent at the moment. Is that that debt does not end up on the government's box and therefore impacting our taxes, so that would be one of the reasons that governance looks so convoluted, I think.
Yes, good point. Yeah, it's a, they're trying to balance retaining some council ownership, it's called it, with. Ensuring that there's a balance sheet separation between the councils and the entities. While not going quite as far as putting them into the government's balance sheet. So there's a sort of trying to, trying to get all of these three things happening all at once.
So, okay, so, thank you for that, so where does it go? So if we were looking at the efficiencies, terminology there for being able to leverage more debt. When it comes to debt ratio, eightfold rather than one and a half or twofold locally. That sits upon someone's shoulders, you're borrowing it there, but it still comes from the customer. From the customer, either direct customer or a nationwide customer.
It sits on the entity, and the entity is allowed to borrow that money because it is a utility service. And the utilities are allowed to, in the minds of the credit rating agencies, borrow significant amounts of money, they have a guaranteed revenue stream for perpetuity. So the debt sits on the entity's balance sheets with the sort of caveat on the side that there's four water authorities in New Zealand and the government is never going to let them go under.
But then that debt or maintaining the operations or maintaining that finances still comes upon the customer. Whatever the efficiency, so the money is not coming from nowhere and I was paying it, maybe extending it, you're gradually leveraging, I mean, I'll get plenty of banks, say. Well, we'll give you a credit card of this amount, I say, no, I don't need that amount, Brian, thank you very much.
Yeah, it all, it all still come, there's only, there's only one group of people who pay for anything in New Zealand.
Great, great. And, and, okay, thank you there, but there's obviously lots of questions come, but thank you.
Okay, I'll go now back to Rohan.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to, I think, build off. Some of the things that Kate was saying around environmental protection, one of those being, I think that there'll, that there is an expectation for higher qualities of stormwater. And I, I noted that there'll definitely be complexities there in our last workshop. Especially with the quality of stormwater primarily being determined before it actually enters into pipes. And so I've still got plenty of question marks there. But I also think that resiliency is going to increasingly be a priority for our community. And my, I guess, most of the questions coming out of that would be is we know that one of the key ways. Of improving resiliency, particularly in our wastewater network, is through sort of. Not through larger treatment plants, but actually smaller, more distributed ones, basically having more fallbacks. I wonder whether a larger entity's sort of preference, especially if they're seeking and will be expected to find. Pretty significant efficiencies, whether that focus is going to be. More on the side of larger, single. Treatment plants to address those challenges and also whether it'll, they'll be sort of able to, to keep their ear to the ground. With, you know, local resiliency challenges.
Questions, who wants to have got those? Pat?
So resilience is something that we have been talking at a steering group level with, with DIA about, DIA about. It's important that the economic regulator recognises that resilience is important and is allowed for and. It's not something that these, these entities are allowed to get into. So, so that all your, your key trunk mains are duplicated and follow different routes, so that you've always got something in play, no matter what, what the disaster is. But in terms of treatment plants, I think it was Tasmania, I, I lose track of all the information we get. But that they had reduced from something like about seven or eight hundred treatment plants down to about two or three hundred as they had. Started to. Achieve economies of scale. And I know there's one North Island council where they've looked at the cost of renewing a consent for a treatment plant and worked out that it's cheaper to. To lay, put, build pump stations and pipelines and link them together, that some of these smaller townships together and have one, one large treatment plant where they can. Provide a higher standard of treatment and and disposal. And, and just pay for for one consent, because the consenting costs are getting bigger, so. It will depend on just how remote those districts are, but I think we will start to see more rationalisation of, of treatment plants to try and get them to a, to a higher standard. Particularly as I expect, in my personal opinion, that we'll move to more, towards more mechanical plants and less oxidation ponds. Can I, can I just carry on for a second, Rachel? Brian raised a question about integration of. Blood protection and stormwater assets into residential development and public spaces, where the split would be. And this is one of the areas where we, we don't know, it's one of the areas that we, we want more answers. And we don't have them yet, but I think it is an important point to, to feed back to, to the government is about. About this.
Thanks. It's, I was actually having, one of the things that I went to, just very quickly, when I went to Denmark, this is one of the things that I looked at there with their water. Because they've got water entities, slightly different, similar to Tasmania. But they had, I think this is a really important part for us around flood protection, climate change, resiliency, the debt processes that we're going to be going through in stormwater, because it's all around. A lot of it's around land use and how you deal with it. They've got, they had a really, it was a really interesting model, seeing how they operate and where those costs fall, so. You know, there's a bit of a proportionality around, is it for water, so, or is it, is it a recreational value? So if you're building, you know, a. There are a football field that's, or tennis courts that are set down, actually that they're lowered down, so you get a recreational benefit, but they're actually a stormwater detention. How do you attribute those costs? And so it's, I think it's quite a complex issue, but it's really important one, Rohan, to work through this one. I, I was kind of going, oh, we'll keep our stormwater out, until I saw the numbers and saw that that's where a lot of our costs are, so I was going.
Just on, on that point from Pat around what Tasmania has seen, has any work been done around? How that's impacted sort of their overall resiliency, I, I'm guessing it means sort of larger populations relying on. On the same singular wastewater treatment plant and how they're then accounting for sort of redundancies and, and the potential of. Coastal inundation and sea level rise on those treatment plants.
I can't answer that one.
So. Neither can I, but one of the things, there was supposed to be a tour to Tasmania towards the end of this year, that's now turning into a virtual tour. So if you're, you're interested, we could probably put you, so that'd be a couple of days of Zoom meetings with. The relevant people, I have to say, the, the Tasmanian talk webinar with. Local government was, was very interesting and, and probably one of the most useful talks that has been on, on this whole three water subject so far. So there would be some value in that.
Yeah, I'll share the, I'll share the link out with all the councils on that one, because it was on a. Chair's face, but I think so.
An email turned up this afternoon, I think it's going to.
Oh, good.
So it's there.
My message got through, that's great.
They have, and the Victorian one as well.
Brilliant, okay. Dan, what else do we need to cover off, just thinking about, I think, the plan, the plan integration one?
Yeah, I think, I think that's an issue that's important for everyone, and it's an issue that has to be solved. I, I think you're having a really good discussion about what's important to your community. And that's going to make, you know, because the end product in a couple of weeks is you've got to prepare a submission that goes back up or a response or a letter or a report and. Having you articulate all these key issues is, it's kind of exactly what you need in order to get to the, developing the response, it's a really healthy discussion.
Thanks Dan. Look, in the chat box, Trudy put up a comment, so an outsourcing model, so I just don't know, Trudy, do you want to just talk to that one? It was a question, sorry, I didn't give you a lot of notice that was coming to you, sorry about that.
Oh, sorry, I was actually typing something else into the chat box. It was just about how the assets get spun off into the, the other box on that governance model and about. Then it would then all get outsourced, it would never be in source, so therefore that creates a greater cost instead of a lower cost. But I was just, so it was just with the commentary that was being said at the time, it sounded like that's the outsourced model that we're going to, instead of. Setting up an entity to have things in-house. But then Pat's comment about the Tasmania model, and this is, I'm, I'm just typing into the chat box, I'll just take it out. Under that model that was talked about the other day, it was interesting because it was. A government model, which meant they can't sell off the asset, but this model that we've been showing with the, all the top heavy layers. It looks like it creates a vulnerability, so the assets could be sold off at a future, future date, so I'm just. Yeah, I'm trying to look at that, but I was also reading the other bit about the financial model, so. My head's sort of spinning off into all the different complexities of this, and I'm just trying to stay focused on the slide that we're on instead of.
I can probably answer your question about the outsourced model, I don't think the model assumes either. You know, to be effective, any water entity is going to have to have its own capacity and capability, regardless of how much is outsourced, you still have to have. In-house capability and capacity, or else the market will just run over the top of you. But neither does it assume that the entities will become the new public works departments and do everything themselves, it's, it's reasonably agnostic, it's just. The model, government's modelling just provides the funding in order for activities to happen, so there's no presumption that everything's outsourced.
Okay, that's, that's.
Sorry, I keep forgetting I'm muted, so basically we're saying about separating assets and make it easier. Which basically leads to the spin of a private labour market. At a later date, is that what we're saying?
I'll go back to Dan, I don't think so, no, I think what we've got is. I guess the question is, and this is a really good question, is because you've got the government, you know, the, the role of the government in the Tasmanian model and. And, you know, Dan, you might have some thoughts on that, you might, I don't know if you're about that Tasmanian model, because you might want to come to that, but I think. One of the things I put in the chat, is there sufficient protection from privatisation in the model, is it strong enough at the moment? And that's one of the bits of feedback that's been coming back, that, that protection from privatisation has been key. To local government members, and I, and I would have thought my conversations with, with all of you have been that is for us too, that you, you wouldn't want to see these. Entities privatised, so we might want to just strengthen up that. Look for some strengthening there, Trudy, is that, is that, it's probably not quite on point, but I.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just because of the model, the way it's looking, and it's so top-heavy, but there's, there's little breaks in there that. I just talked about the separation and the distance, it makes it easier for the assets to be spun off at a later date for privatisation, and that's quite a vulnerability and that's. Quite a concern for many of our public and the feedback that we're getting across, which I'm also aware that. The webinars and stuff, that's been a common thread in the conversation as well, so I'm just trying to. Because I thought the other day when we had our workshop, was it Jason? He mentioned that this is the eight-week period that we're supposed to be looking at, like, the financial models and feeding back in the vulnerabilities and the concerns from the public, and that's. A key one is, and we've seen it before. Through government changes, the government of the day come in with different jurisdictions, they look at different things. And in the nineties, when all the deregulation came in and the selling off of assets and the privatisation of different things, we almost. And um in the nineties, when all the deregulation came in and the selling off of assets and the privatization of different things, we almost became tenants of our own country and not owning. Our stuff, which became a great concern, and people still hang on to that lack of trust. And in all the communication and stuff that has come forward under this and with the model, the way it sits. It it's triggering those people again um with their concerns about privatization at a future date. And while you've got the reassurances from um the minister. Um, Mahuta now, um and this is what I alluded to the other day, is. While she's got the respect and working with local government, a lot of her colleagues and members of parliament are saying. Why are you spending so much time with local government? Um. Just get on with it. Just regulate it, mandate it, make it happen. So. You know, if a person who walks their talk isn't in that role and she gets a different portfolio, all of a sudden that opens us up. To the ability for the government to sell off and move it into a privatization. And so. There are some concerns on that coming through quite strongly with our community, um as well as um, yeah, some other things, but I'm just trying to stay focused.
On what's in front of us. No, I think that's a very good reflection of what we're hearing, absolutely. And that is a bigger show. And there is a, people do remember what happened. And so. I guess that's how do you create, you know, what needs to be sitting in here to provide those protections. But I'll come just come back to Dan because I've come through four minutes before.
Um. I, all I was gonna say is I I don't know a lot about the Tasmanian model. Um. But what I, and I, you know, I hear that um comment that it's the government involvement there is um, you know, helpful to the situation. I probably look at that and I'm a little bit dubious about it. I look at it and say. The the Tasmanian model was designed to pay dividends back to the councils as owners. They they stopped doing that. You know, they had to stop because they couldn't afford it. They needed to invest the money in infrastructure. Then the state government effectively buys a share of it to introduce additional funding. So you can look at all the different models around the world and you can see good bits and possibly get bad bits in them all. I think um. Yeah, I don't want to keep harping back, but I think the key thing is to look at the model that's in front of us, look at what's important to us. And and try and direct it in the right direction. And these ideas, these themes of, you know, accountability to the community, protection from privatization. Um. Looking after the local communities and the economy, resilience, all of those things that. The the flesh that needs to be put on the bones of this proposal.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. So we heard on this slide earlier on, we won't put them back up again because it's actually a whole lot easier for me if I can see you all. Um. Was the um issue of how we get our services delivered. So. Um. The intentional, I think, is, you know, as I understand it, the long-term plans of the starting position, because you're gonna have to have a program. Of works for a new entity to take on board. So we will have that that sitting there. But what I am interested in doing and is. Actually embedding this as a direct, um as we do the plan making. That the entities are the plan deliverers, if that makes sense. So they are providing services to the customers, but they're also providing services to the network that we need. For social and economic development. So we're gonna have to think about how we um actually embed that in as well. I think that's critical. Because for me, the place making function, and we talked about resilience before, we're thinking about, you know, adaptation around climate change. All of those discussions should be led um from a from local government with the support of others, but they need to be community conversations. So. I still haven't seen that piece there yet, so we probably want to bring that back to think about. From my perspective, I'm still working out how I could. How we could wire that in to make that the very clear hierarchy. And that that will probably would be a legislative fix. So you'd have to have it in the legislation to know how is, what is the hierarchy. And it may be that it's. It's something that goes, you know, into the local government and the legislation that sits there to establish. Who's the director and who's the deliverer? If that makes any sense. Because I've used the example in the chat boxes, if we had an economic development opportunity, and this came up in the Tasmanian Zoom as well. And the mayor there talked about, he did, they had a great opportunity, but they needed for economic development, but they needed water services. He had the ability to go directly to the water entity, services entity, to buy those services. So I want to make sure that we got to have that same. Ability, because sometimes it's not, it's not just about existing customers. It's actually about an economic development opportunity that's come along. And you can think of one now. Um. The science and technology precinct, where we needed to do some fast work on getting some stormwater pipes out of the way to allow a property transaction to happen. And I still want to make sure that we've got that flexibility to pivot for those opportunities. So, Rachel, I have a couple of questions around that. Okay, it's now four o'clock, Kate. So I am gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish because it's been a really long day and I know um. Everyone's got other meetings to go to. But what we'll do is if we can capture, just think about the questions as they come up. Um. Who hosts the holder of the the email too? Have we got a three waters email address or something like that at the moment, or are we? Who's going to be the gatherer? I don't mind doing it, but um it thinks. I I kind of don't want to give Jenny another task to do to be the um sorter, Pat.
So we have a three waters team. Um, I'll um.
You'll leave mine out.
Get someone from the team to send that out and and we'll we'll um collate those. Uh. And and I think start writing a letter, a draft letter to accompany that report um that the council will be seeing.
Okay, so look, next steps, we've got a bit to do to get that up to the report. Um. I did get um. Had Ellen um Pragnal from DIA was on a call, um as I said earlier this week, to say. Look, the ministers, the the waters ministers are really wanting to get this feedback. Um. We um, there will be more conversations. We're not expecting to solve the governance model in the next couple of weeks. But we need to get the, what are the key things? If the sector was saying, no, we're absolutely fine with that um wiring diagram. Um. Then. Start to go, great, get on with it. That's definitely not the message that's coming through. So um and there is a willingness to to look at some other models. So I think we just need to identify. And if we've got some cunning cunning solutions, then now's our chance to put them up because um. There are going to have to be, there are gonna, there is, in my view, going to have to be some change around us to make this palatable to the to the sector. That that's my personal view, and I think that's what I'm hearing from all of you on the on the Zoom today. So. Look, I thank you. It's been a really long day. Um. And I'm really grateful for the attendance and thank you again, Dan, for coming in to see us. Um. But that's been great. It really has been good. And I think you've given us some 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 really um clear guidance about where to focus our energy. Pat, does any closing comments from you?
No, thanks, Rachel. This has been 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 really useful um uh in in terms of us shaping the report to to the council meeting and we can start um. Drafting a a letter for for council to to have a look at it at that time as well.
Okay, great. And look, if I get, if I make some more progress on that governance model, even, you know, because there'll be some. Um. There's some work that's going to go on and that in the meantime, I'll bring what I've got back to the council so we can actually start, you know. Saying, okay, does this, is this the area that actually addresses the concerns? What does it look like? So my 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 sense at the moment is. Um. A bit like Dan's the other day, that I don't think the government are going to abandon this. I think they recognize that we need to move from the status quo. And I think there's enough evidence base to say that we need to change that. But there is, there are certainly elements of this that still need to be worked through. So I'd really like to see us focus on those things that are important to our community and and get them through. Mel, you know, comment?
Yes, I have, Rachel. You just pressed a button on me right then. You see, we're getting out to the public. Well, no, we're not. We're going to have webinars and Zoom meetings, but. You know, what value, and they need to know this, what value is the thinking from the community? Going to carry with us. We're the governance body and I just. I just feel that uh. The matter's been resolved from the way everyone's talking here today. Um. And we're going with the opt-in. But to the community, there's a strong, strong feeling that we should stand back. Yes, listen to the opt-in um case, and we've heard it at this, at this particular workshop and the one before, and the webinars. But there is another case. There is another case to do our due diligence. To do our due diligence and look for Nelson. What benefits Nelson, not New Zealand, as has been said mostly. What benefits Nelson as far as the opt-out case goes? So we have to, for our credibility sake. We really do, and I'm very serious about this. And I'm looking, Pat, trying to do my best to look him straight in the eye and say, we want an independent review, similar to Fongaray. But same people, actually, if possible, I think. Um.
Couple of things, Mel, so.
I haven't finished it, Rachel, to give us advice on the water reform opt-out option.
Well, I'll go to the advice to Pat in a minute, but a couple of things that we're not being asked to opt in or opt out at the moment. So there's no, that's not what we're being asked to do. In terms of the community, look, we've got some people really engaged on this, as you've said, really engaged um and very capable, knowledgeable people. So I want to try and get, you know, those conversations going. I think they're important. Um. It I know all of the elements aren't there for for us at the moment, um but there's probably enough to get the the sense of it. And then the bits that are missing, then I actually think it's useful to talk to people and say, well, it's missing this, but it's missing that. But but there's no. Um. In or out option at the moment, but I'll go to Pat for the uh independent advice.
What what concerns me, though, is we might leave this aspect of it too late. And uh, you know, we've got to speak up now and say, and I'm trying to do that. Um. And it's too late, we can't get a review up or a report up. So that's why I'm raising it.
Okay, so go across to Pat. What we want to do is, we we, he will be able to talk about the Castalia report because um. Pat has seen that work before. There's not time to do that today, but we will be able to do that. But just in terms of the independent and that that report you're seeing from commissioned by Fongaray. But Pat, just in terms of the 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 advice, I mean, we've gotten um.
So at the moment, we're not asked, being asked to opt in or opt out. At the moment, we're we're being asked to basically comment on what's being proposed. Uh. Which is what we're doing. I mean, at the end of the day, the government has invited local, all of local governments. In inside the tent uh in terms of trying to work up a proposal that um addresses the challenges into the future and addresses current concerns. And and that's that's what we're doing. If they come back with a an opt-in, opt-out, then of course we'll have to to evaluate those options. But I I have to say that the the people that are are um providing advice to DIA in terms of various swear and bickers. I mean, these are big multinational, multi multinational firms that um stand or fall on their professional reputations. Dan from Morrison Low, when we when we engaged him through to review the Wix data, he made it very clear um that he would tell us. What what he saw, and he has done. So we have three uh sources of independent advice at at the moment. I know that DIA are having a look at the um Castalia um report and will be providing some commentary on that. But to do the a a full analysis of our own would be very expensive and very time consuming. We've got two months. Uh. And what we're trying to do at the moment is provide commentary on the things we like and don't like about the proposal. And then we'll wait for Cabinet to make decisions going forward. In my view, I think.
I'm gonna give the last word to Dan because he's got a dash and we've got to get off this call. Someone else is messaging me and saying, where am I on in my next Zoom? Okay, Dan.
I was just gonna say, um in regards to the Castalia report, a lot of the Castalia report and Fongaray was a critical about this. The amount of the investment projected for Fongaray district. Now, what you might remember from the last workshop is that actually the Wix projection of enhancement and level of service investment for Nelson. By Wix is very similar to your own projections. The other part of the Castalia report was around the assumptions and where they where they don't find them to be credible. The a sensitive analysis we've already given you largely shows you what happens if you take away those those efficiencies. I'd actually be really interested to see what they'd write, given your situation is quite different to Fongaray. But I think you've got the kind of information to show you, what if the Wix analysis isn't. Quite as what it says already. I I think you've got some stuff to there already.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Right, I'm gonna close off. Good to see you all. Have a lovely evening. And thank you for persevering from nine AM till after four PM consistently on Zoom. I hope you can still see. I can't see very well now. Okay, matewa.